The TV is black, but Nikki assures me that we are being recorded. So, you're kind of exciting. We are gonna get going. I'm gonna call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at 6:32 PM on December 3rd, 2025. And if you would join me. All right, so first, I have the citizens' comments, and I do not see any citizens present looking to comment. So we'll move the agenda to the consent agenda, and I'll ask Amy for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda December 3rd, 2025.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. That is unanimous, thank you very much. So, school committee chairperson update, I have nothing in addition to the agenda to present, so I'm just gonna continue moving to the student representative report, and I'll turn it over to Ryan and Maria.
Hi. So, last week I talked about our parapuff and our fall plate, which the parapuff our seniors won, so congrats to them. And the fall plate was very successful, was really funny, I don't know, I just, I thought it was one of the best that I've saw so far. Decomment competitions on Friday, so good luck for those who are doing that. And school committee meets with Stuko next Wednesday, so that should be exciting.
Um, we have winter sports, tryouts, and seasons, we're just kinda getting started. Just a brief update for the State Lot Association. So, the directors got assigned, and I'll be working with the directors of finances and resources, I'm kind of like their liaison and organization, so that should be cool. And they're still working on planning some events for like districts and across the state. And then, just the last thing I was asked to add, was that there was a little worried stress about the road safety the other day when we were, with the snow. Obviously, I think it worked out in the end with the half day, but I just wanted you guys to know that seniors and viewers were a little bit stressed after the weather.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I did hear quite a few people about into accidents, so, yeah.
Thanks, thanks. We appreciate that perspective. Any questions for the students? Lots of good things happening.
That is a topic that will be on our... We have an upcoming, uh, guide that's coming up before the winter break. Cool, so that'll be a month.
All right, everybody, let's keep going here. We thank our students for being here, as always. But next, we move to the superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to Kurt.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we have a few things for you tonight. In the superintendent, the first item here is Massachusetts K-12 Graduation Standards Recommendations. This came to us hot off the presses on Monday. And you might have seen it in the news, as the governor had a press conference regarding these standards. Today, myself and Assistant Superintendent Friend attended a Massachusetts Association School Superintendent's meeting with both the Commissioner and the Secretary. So, Commissioner Martinez, Secretary Tuttweiler, went through the general talking points of what's coming with the recommendations. It is, the report is a 112-page report, so to save the length in this of that, I created AI summary of the main key points and included them in the school committee report today. There are seven pieces. I want to really sort of caution the committee, this is an initial form and draft form. Some of these elements are going to, can be addressed through regulation, other have to be addressed through statute. And that's what has to be flushed out once the final recommendations come in June. So this is not something, even though the final recommendations are coming in June, that does not mean it's being enacted shortly thereafter. They have to figure out the government levels, the processes, and the debate at the State House to go around that. But it does give a forecast. And it's a forecast that shows the seven elements that would be included in the recommendations. And those seven elements can be summarized as the high-quality programming, the end-of-course assessments, the, excuse me, capstone project or portfolio, using MyCap, the Career and Academic Plan, which you've heard Assistant Superintendent Friend report on several times. An element for the FAFSA and NASA completion with an opt-out, financial literacy requirements, which have not been defined, and then optional seals of distinction. Again, Assistant Superintendent Friend has spoken about the seal of blind literacy, that our students currently have an option to be added to diplomas to their graduation. So, Secretary Tuttweiler talked about while we have that now, there's potential in the future for other seals of emphasis in areas, and just want to make sure that what does come down the line leaves its availability to that. So I provide you that tonight in context of, we're gonna be talking about the competency determination policy later in the agenda. And in that policy, our policy is essentially going to be the bridge until that moment that we have the regulations and the statutes in place. And then, of course, we'll update the policy once all of that is finalized to reflect what is then memorialized through regulation, statute, if necessary. So this policy that we're gonna address later tonight is gonna be the bridge to that moment, and I hope what you see in the policy is that it provides enough space for us to meet the requirements we're supposed to meet by December 31st, and its submission, while waiting for what is now more known than it was last week, where the state is headed with a comprehensive K-12 graduation requirement policy and law. So I think I'll keep going, because we're gonna have more robust conversations about that than the agenda item. Included in your report is the first four Asbet Valley Collaborative Reports. This first report is a summary report of what the Asbet Valley Collaborative is all about. You can see our member towns, including, you'll see awkward-looking pointer box, that is the Asbet Valley Regional Technical High School, that is located in Marlborough, is a part of our collaborative as well. And it provides multiple disability programs for students with special needs. And on the back of that report, you'll see some examples of some of our students and learners that are in the collaborative. Currently, Neshoba does have several students that are in collaborative programming, so we are taking advantage of our membership in that way. And then, there are some priorities of the, what is happening in ADC this year. There has been an uptick in enrollment, which is good for the programs. And our students that are in the OSAD program are receiving some diplomas. And then, there are some other elements there in terms of revenue and cost. New roof is needed, and we're generating more revenue through professional development that's been able to be hosted. I actually was at ADC today on a superintendent panel for second-year superintendents. So, MASIS is one of those organizations that rents that facility regularly. So, it's nice that they're able to generate some revenue through other channels other than the programming. That helps the overall health of the collaborative. And with that, I'm gonna pass the report now over to Assistant Superintendent Ross Mulcain to talk about the high school water update and the director of facilities opening. Ross Mulcain.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and good evening to the school committee. So, ongoing levels of manganese at the high school water supply, not just in raw water, but in finished water at different fixtures. So what we've done is, we've worked with DEP to update our action plan, and certainly notified families as well. We'll continue to monitor those levels. Along with the facilities department, this hand again has worked really hard to make sure that our, all of our water information is public-facing for each of the buildings. So the link here takes you to the water page, and all of the information is there, including the notices that went up to the families and staff at the high school last week. That includes the cover letter from the district that talks about what we're doing and what we'll be doing in the future, and then also has the official public notice from DEP as well. So, we are obligated to update that every 90 days. Just got that email from DEP today, so we'll continue to do that and continue to monitor those levels, and find the best solutions we can while we keep that building online for the next couple of years.
You can keep going, there's lots of questions to be answered.
So, speaking of the facilities department, we did get some difficult news, but we're happy for Mr. Freeswick that he'll be moving on to a different employer outside the public sector, and we wish him well. Rob's a dedicated team member, I've known him as long as I've worked in the district, and seen him go from the grounds crew to the director of facilities, and is an absolute resource for this district. And will continue to be, I know that we can reach out to him, but currently doing everything I can to learn everything while we work on transitioning into a new director of facilities. So, we wish Mr. Freeswick well, and we'll stop saying great things about him, but it's time to start thinking about a next director of facilities, so we'll do our best to hire an ambitious timeline, and if that doesn't work out, we would look into an interim position to finish off the school year, give us a little bit of space.
All right. These moments, you need to take advantage of when they're in front of you, and I just want to take advantage of the moment to commend Mr. Freeswick and his service to our school system. Over the course of my now 30-plus-year career, I've known a lot of facility directors, and Rob is one of the finest. And it's because he cares, and he cares about this school system, he cares about the students in it, he cares about the people that work here. And you saw it every day in his job. So, our next director has some big shoes to fill, but we're gonna strive to, you know, find the best person. So, we just, I just want to thank Mr. Freeswick for everything he's done for us.
I'll binwagging that and say that Rob is the most important person you don't know in the school district. I really do believe that, I've always known it. So, I also want to say thank you to Rob, and I hope I get to see him before he is off to the other, because we do appreciate you, Rob, and your best, so we wish you good luck.
Thank you.
What questions? We have both the superintendent's report.
So, about the water issue, and I apologize if you've covered all this in the various communications to the community about that, quite reasonable. How are you preventing people, especially visitors to our schools, from accessing, drinking the water? Because, you know, I understand drinking a little bit might not be terrible, but drinking a lot is problematic, and so, how are we, like you said, we turned off like water bottle dispensers and things like that, if people might...
Yep, any fixture that's over the limit, essentially is shut off.
Oh, fine.
Okay. So, yeah, but we're providing bottled water, and Ryan, Maria can attest to that?
It's there, everyone knows, everyone knows it's there, which is obviously one of the more important things, because if it's there, no one else is there, doesn't do too good. But, people consistently use it, and it's fine.
Like I said, people in the community are probably well-informed on this issue, but I'm just concerned about visitors to our school, are they aware of the situation?
It's a good question, thank you for asking.
Can you also explain, we have already, but just say it again, that is this an issue that's going to persist with the new building?
No. And the reason is because of the design of the new filtration system, so we're just in another meeting today to talk more about that. So everything is being upgraded from essentially, we'll have also new wells, right? So we don't know the actual raw water levels yet, because those haven't been flushed fully. So, we'll have new, new well sources for the water, and then we'll have a full, brand-new filtration system. We already have installed a new pump, so this is just ongoing work that will continue to build out. We're actually building out the building that encases the water pumps and the new filtration system and the water tank, so that will all continue to get built out over time, so, yep. And we have different options to cycle through for the water testing prior to the building being opened, so we're choosing the right path that makes the most sense for the system that's being designed.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you wish, we can speak to the chair of the building committee to maybe ask our team to report on that, just because it's an important topic on our community, and perhaps talk about that at the school building committee about the new water system.
That'd be a good idea. Okay.
So I know we have, I'll talk about that when we get to the committee.
Any other questions? All right, I'm not seeing any, so thank you very much for the superintendent's report. Thanks, guys, appreciate you being here. So on to new business, everyone. We are gonna talk now about school policy IKFE. This is the competency determination first meeting, and so, this is what you were referencing earlier, so let's talk a little bit more about it, and Kurt, do you wanna kind of tee this up?
Well, I will, unless I want to give our chair an opportunity to speak first, but should I just take it?
Take it.
Okay. So on your screen, Miss Mashin has posted the competency determination policy. This is one of those policies that comes to an all-red because it's brand-new. There's nothing, it is, it is all redlined, being a brand-new policy. It is taken from some model language that has been provided to us, and we've been able to work on that language locally. Myself, Assistant Superintendent Friend, who please join in at any time here, Dr. Boyton, Ms. Speck, our guidance chair at the high school, we've been working together, we've been looking at other policies that are in draft form from other school districts. I will say that I feel good about where we are, we're ahead of the game, because I know about 50% of the school districts have applied for extensions on that deadline, and I think we're gonna be there. To re-educate the committee and our community, this policy is now necessary, it's a requirement by the department, to essentially fill the void that was left when the passage last year of ballot question two, to remove the high-stakes requirement for MCAS testing required to receive a diploma. And so, we are required to say how we define competency in our district while this is going, while the state committee that I just spoke about at the beginning of the meeting is working towards the regulation and state laws that will be coming. So with that as sort of the setup, when you look through the policy, the first element is the demonstration of mastery and completed coursework through a rigorous academic course catalog. I will say, that first requirement that is in the recommendations from the state, by virtue of the fact that we are aligning our graduation requirements to the mass core, addresses that. So that's a question that's in the new policy that frankly is answered in what we've constructed here. But in addition to that, you have to, your mastery has a second component to it, and that is the final assessment for a course, or a capstone, or a portfolio project. And the last is an equivalent measure identified in the district's CD policy, and then you'll see parenthetically, late-enrolling students. And the reason why that is there is because when we get late-enrolling students, particularly students that come in and their late enrollment means like their junior year, their senior year, they've been educated for the vast of their years in other places, and earned their course credits according to what their local body is saying, and sometimes it doesn't match perfectly. So, it is in those cases that we can continue to use the MCAS assessment to determine competency for a student. So, for late-enrolling students, that third bullet, the equivalent measure identified with the district is gonna be the MCAS assessment for that purpose, to help with that element. So you can see, in terms of, students will be determined to have completely satisfactory coursework, English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and History. In the recommendations that came out Monday, it talked about the end-of-course assessments that would be state-administered and state-scored. They will not be tied to graduation requirement, but it will be tied, it will be common across the state of Massachusetts, and Secretary Tuttweiler sharing that it will come into play as MCAS goes away. So, MCAS at the high school level will be sunsetted as these new common assessments for these identified courses are there. I was in a meeting a couple weeks ago with Secretary Tuttweiler and had an opportunity to bring up the point of, well, if that's the case, and we're basing this on the 2023 MCAS assessment, and what was assessed there according to the state standards, that means we would need end-of-course assessments for freshman English, sophomore English, Algebra I, Geometry, Physics, Chemistry, Biology, and eventually, the high school civics course or a history course. So, that all being said, sounds like a lot, and that's gonna be part of the debate that is going on this springtime with the recommendations that are coming out of the state. It concerns me. I appreciate the idea of trying to make the assessment meaningful and tied to the course in a way that informs the teacher, but there are some things that I think are really gonna have to be addressed. For instance, if this truly is an end-of-course assessment, it is going to have to be a design that gives instant feedback to the teacher and the student in order for them to then complete the course and issue grades in a timely manner in these end-of-course assessments. So that being said, that's down the road, that's not for us, so what we would have to look at in our, determining final assessments in those areas for our courses. And that is work that we would have to currently be doing. Right now, we do have final exams in our courses or final projects, and they can serve to meet that need in this bridge period. We just need to do some work on alignment of those things in our courses. Assistant Superintendent, anything to add there?
There's not a lot of latitude for districts in the requirements for the current CD policy, but we're gonna do our best to seize it as an opportunity to make our current work stronger. And we're seeing it as an opportunity to take a look at our assessments and revisions of our assessments and alignment of our assessments to continue to deepen learning for students, so we're looking at it as an opportunity.
The next...
Not a check-the-box, or a multiple-choice kind of situation.
Because as, remember, the chair stating in a previous meeting, we just don't want a basic multiple-choice test that's just given to kids as a check-the-box kind of thing, that's not effective, that's not learning about the student and assessing their mastery. And that's what these first two elements really are about, is learning and determining the mastery. So, the next section after that, I spoke to in terms of those aligned courses. There are considerations in here for students with disabilities that have been, and then also for students that are in out-of-district placement. They are required to meet the competency determination policy as they are required to meet MCAS expectations now. For students that are on programs where they receive a certificate of completion, that will continue for those students, and then other students on pathways for diploma, those on the pathway for diploma would need to meet the competency determination.
Superintendent Downing, can you, we could, because we talked a little bit more like in the policy subcommittee meeting about that, and you brought up a really important point around out-of-district placements, can you, do you remember what you had talked about a little bit?
You're gonna have to prompt me a little bit, but we are beholden to the performance of students that are in out-of-district placements. They, so if we, if students who are attending out-of-district placements, their assessments, their scores, their various things, it's not a reflection on the school actually where they attend, it's a reflection on the school that, for lack of a better way to look at it, is putting the bill for their education. So, all out-of-district students and their performance on these assessments, as they currently are, come back to the district and are aggregated under the Neshoba Regional umbrella.
You also talked about, which I think is an important point for community members, is that students that are placed in out-of-district placements are placed in approved placements, and so therefore, they're going through the same academic expectations and rigor in that part of the process that our director goes through, is making sure that those programs are appropriate for students.
Our director, Mr. Manch, is here, do you want to speak to that point?
No, you're right, it's, has to be an approved school through DESI, and then all those requirements come back to our high school, and our high school issues out the diploma based on those requirements.
Thank you, that's a very important piece to look at. The next piece is regarding English language learners, that we can look at their cases on a case-by-case basis, determine the appropriate courses needed for English language learners. We have had scenarios where English language learners are coming to us in their junior and senior year, so they're not gonna have an opportunity to complete four years of English in the high school. So it's in scenarios like that that we can then say, okay, how are they developing in their native language, and do our best work through our ER program in our, at the high school to show that they have at least demonstrated those competencies in their native language, so that we could make some parallels and some crossovers to help those students reach graduation. Late-enrolling students is on here as well. They can be offered that in several ways, transcript reviews, so our guidance department looks at the transcripts to make those crossovers and determine course requirements, and we can utilize online courses. We have with some students that needed to make that up, because our pathway of courses might not match up the pathway of where a student came, has come from, so we have to be clever sometimes in how we get that course for those students. So we have to be clever sometimes in how we get that course for those students. And then we mentioned the MCAS. And then there is an appeal process in regards to competency determination. So a written request to the district administrators, and so the district curriculum content expert. And I think that's important. Think of it as a department head maybe, in some cases. It could be an assistant principal, it could be the principal, it could be the guidance director. But we want that to be versatile because if we're talking about course equivalency, say for a calculus course, we want somebody that has the expertise of calculus to be able to determine the equivalency. And then the district administrator for any appeals would write, again, put that decision in writing. So the last piece is that those enrolled in the Neshoba Regional School District in the classes 03 to 24 that did not earn a diploma may request a review of competency determination by the same process. So what that means is if we have somebody who has aged out of the system, meaning they're older than 22, and they come back and say, hey, I didn't get to complete my diploma, under the new law, it says I have an opportunity to do that. They would come, we would go through the review process similar as described in some of those other cases for that student. And I think that brings us to a close, Superintendent.
Very good. So Jackie, was there anything else that you wanted to add from policy?
I think just in making sure that we have clear next steps. Could you also help take notes, Matt, just in case?
Oh, as we give feedback, maybe?
Yes, because I think what happens is like, I'm very good at typing, I'm not typing all these things at the same time. I want to be able to make sure we have everything that we need.
Very good. Okay. Questions?
Yeah, so I am trying to wrap my head around all this because we've looked at two policies in the last two weeks. So in order to graduate going forward, you need to meet requirements of both these policies.
So think of it this way. Competency determination is a standalone policy to determine that mastery component that's then embedded in the graduation requirements as a requirement to graduate.
Because that other policy references this one.
It does, but this one doesn't reference that one.
Correct.
Okay. And then that answers kind of my first big-picture question. And then my second question has to do with the courses that are listed on here as meeting, leaving the competency, demonstrating competency requirements. I noticed that for history, we're listing US History I, US History II, and AP US History. But in science, we're not listing AP Biology or AP Chemistry. And we have AP Physics II. Is there a reason why those aren't listed as?
To access those courses, you need to have taken the previous courses. So by that time, you've met the competency.
That's actually true about the AP US History plus one, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll cross-check that.
Okay.
So you could remove AP US History because
Yeah, for consistency.
in order to get to that one, you will have already taken the US History I. You wouldn't have to take the US History II.
They're two different, they're not the same.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
US History I and US History II are not the same material.
Right, as AP History.
Correct.
They're not, yeah.
I have to tell you, one of the discussions that we had on this is that for English, Math, and Science, we're given the guidance to look to the state framework assessment 2023 and the courses that cover those elements. The civics element isn't in play yet. So we said, okay, which courses will address that? Because we don't have a 2023 definition of it.
But the requirement is history, not civics. And so I don't think, like, the civics lives in the eighth grade, so like, that's never going to be at the high school.
For the, for the
The tests.
Yeah, but also the, there's two places that's, it's the
They have to do a community action project.
The community action project.
In one of the classes.
Yeah, in one of the classes, correct.
But I would say that, I'm just going to give a little bit of an elbow here in saying that I think this kind of point, what you're experiencing here in trying to articulate how Neshoba does history classes, the spoken sequence of the high school social studies program is actually something that is lovely. It's fantastic and great in so many ways, but it doesn't actually follow any rhyme or reason, in my opinion. The kids are taking electives as sophomores, and it's a little jumbled. So this is probably going to be a little funky because sophomore year is a very strange offering.
Well, I think it won't be soon. We are working currently with our social studies department on that very question, and you'll be getting an update at the school committee this spring when we bring forward the course of studies.
I look forward to it. Okay. So are you okay with just removing AP?
Yeah, just it seemed inconsistent, so that's fine.
We'll cross-check and in doing so, because I'm not recording.
I will, I will check in.
Yeah, so we'll cross-check that. I think it's a good point.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So at the, on the beginning of this, on the first page, it talks about students must meet one of the following criteria: a final assessment or a capstone or the equivalent measure. But down in the chart, no, I guess in the right up below the chart, it says, at the end of each section, it says, meet the established performance criteria on an aligned end-of-course assessment. So is it either/or, or is it an assessment?
The way that we understood it is that it could be any one of those.
So the end-of-course assessments are going to be required on this. The passing of the end-of-course assessment is not the only pathway to determine competence and determination. You can also have that through portfolios or a capstone. Also recognize that assessments aren't just multiple-choice assessments. The assessments can come in the form of a project, a common project, those types of things as well.
Okay. So, meet this and meet the established performance criteria on an aligned end-of-course assessment.
So it's basically making the assessments mandatory for passing the course, but not mandatory for, this is literally the dumbest thing I can imagine. Because it's making the exam mandatory for the course, but not to graduate. That makes no sense.
And I think I can, this was actually, your very question was proposed to Secretary Tuckwiler. And his response to that was that when valid question two removed the MCAS requirement, the interpretation made at the State House was the voters were essentially saying, we do not want a singular high-stake assessments to determine if our students can graduate or not. So that's why that element there has been put into place to say, we have to continue to have these high-stake assessments as required by federal law. So we have to have them. We have to have some sort of statewide common assessment by federal law. So this is the pathway to meet federal regulations while also building in competency determination of these courses and try to design it in a way that best responds to the will of the voters. Now, I'm trying to summarize Secretary Tuckwiler's words when I said, how did I do, Assistant Superintendent? What I would encourage this committee to think about is, as this is being discussed and put out there throughout the springtime, engage in conversation and share your thoughts through the listening sessions and the processes that will be happening at the direction of the secretary's office and the commissioner's office.
Can I just say that here's my major concern with this? Is that currently, we have final exams, but you don't have to pass them to pass the course. And so I know a lot of kids who fail their high-stakes exams midterms and finals, but they're able to, their work ethic helps pull their grade through and with the teacher's help. And so if we approve this policy, it's actually going to make it so that kids will fail classes if they fail those tests?
Assistant Superintendent?
That's what it sounds like.
I think it, one, we need to think about final assessments as they currently exist. And two, I think it puts an onus on the school district and the school to consider how do we ensure and build and strengthen the gaps for the students so they can pass the assessment versus failing. Because if a student's not going to move forward not passing, it's not, we don't, you know, for school district, the school does not want students to not pass and not graduate. So it puts a responsibility on the district and the school to ensure that students have the knowledge and the skills that they need in order to demonstrate mastery of the course.
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, go for it. I still do not see where the or comes in because it seems quite clear that they must take the end-of-class, so as we would call it now, final exam. But then where's the or? Right? Because up above, it's talking about meet one of the following criteria, the final assessment, which must mean passing the final assessment, I think.
That's missing, by the way, that in fact you have to pass it. One of the things that bothered me is that it's not clear you have to pass it.
Right, because you only have to meet one of those in order to receive full credit for this specified course.
So that is where the or comes in, is that if you take the assessment and you do not pass it, then the capstone project allows you to meet the requirement?
To meet the determination of the competency.
But not to pass the class? Because the capstone is like an end-of-senior-year whatever project, it's not course-specific, right?
But this is referencing course-specific projects. Are you sure? That was my understanding in our conversation.
It doesn't say that. Does a capstone, and a capstone by definition is something that a senior does at the end of four years.
Was that the only, is that the only definition of the word?
Pretty much. Yeah, and the portfolio project is something that our kids are already doing by high school. You're trying to build this up, and it's across courses, it's across years. I think that this is the, oh my gosh, I am flabbergasted by this policy. And I think it's going to do more unintentional harm than good. I'm not feeling good about this at all. And I understand why people are looking for extensions. This is the one they're looking for extensions on? I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think there's a lot of issues embedded in here that we are really taking the time to unpick.
I think the state, the state is the problem, right? Because we cannot pick this. It's like this is terribly written. It's also a Band-Aid. It's trying to fix the federal problem and address a valid question that was
I think it's a little bit of going over it. The takeaway that I had, and Matt, you can correct me, this is not how you agree. That the way that it was written was that there was some level of opportunity for the district and educators to be able to cultivate an end-of-year assessment, end-of-course assessments, that would be a useful tool in determining whether or not a student understands the materials, has gained mastery, et cetera. But that being able to also have, separate from the assessment piece, this other and, that that would satisfy the competency piece, which is confusing.
I think there's an element to point out here, and it begins with the paragraph that starts demonstrating, second paragraph, and the confidence determination requirements. So there's two elements here. First is demonstrating mastery of skills in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science, and the satisfactory completion of relevant coursework aligned to standards mentioned at the high school level in ELA, Math, Science, and CAS assessments administered in 2023. That paragraph speaks to the point that you were trying to make. And that is around the course. A student can work hard, not pass those things, and meet that element. So that's the first element. The second element is the assessment element. That's not tied specifically back to the course because you've already demonstrated that in that second paragraph. So it's the second element, and remember, that's the second element as part of determining competence and competence determination for the purposes of graduation and defining that. So in that way, if a student, say, struggled along and worked their tail off to a C minus in their algebra course, and so they've met the first element, the second, but they didn't pass the final. The second element of that would be ultimately then passing that competence and determination. It doesn't have to be that one-time bite at the apple when you're sitting in a final doing that assessment. You can design multiple opportunities for the student to come back and demonstrate that. It has to be demonstrated prior to graduation for the purpose of graduation. If that's making any sense.
Except down in the course descriptions, it says there's an end-of-course assessment.
There is an end-of-course assessment in it, but it's doesn't, it isn't tied to passing that means you have to pass it to pass the course.
Right.
It doesn't
That was how I understood it.
But if I don't pass the final, then I don't pass the class.
Is that true?
That's what it says. It says, in doing so, the student must earn full credit for the English courses listed above and meet the established performance criteria on an aligned end-of-course assessment.
But that's not tied to the class. That's tied to the competency determination. The competency determination is independent to that.
It says end-of-course. I think maybe that's where the confusion is.
It's an end-of-course assessment, it's course-specific. So it's an English final exam that in order to earn full credit for the class, they need to take that, or they need to meet the established performance criteria from above.
It says it for all the subjects.
It says it for all of them. So this is like, she's like the serpent swallowing its tail. I can't even find where it stops. The state, by the way, the state has held been on keeping MCAS. I'm going to put that on the table. That's happening.
Yeah, but it doesn't have to be tied to graduation.
However, they still want to make it part of the competency determination. And if you're not competent, you can't pass these high-stakes tests. That means you're not competent. And also, guys, at the very top, it says mastery. Now, I'm assuming mastery means satisfactory completion. So is that a C? Because you said C minus. So does that mean Ds are no good anymore?
So you're asking several questions. Which one do you want to hit first?
I want to talk to Secretary Tuckwiler. So tell me about the satisfactory completion. Is a D still passing?
In our course book, it is, D is passing the course. That is in the course of studies.
And then do they have to pass an end-of-course assessment to get to complete their English class, as it says right here?
No, because I don't read it the same way. A student will show mastery in English Language Arts by successfully completing coursework certified by the district through applying the skills, competencies, and knowledge outlined in the Massachusetts Academic Standards Curriculum Plan. So that's the first one. Completed the course. There's lots of different ways that you can complete the course. In doing so, the student must earn full credit for the English courses as listed above. In doing so, the student must earn full credit for the English courses as listed above and meet the established performance criteria on an aligned end of course assessment. That means the and is saying for the purpose of meeting competency determination. The and does not mean for the purpose of passing the course.
Madam Chair.
I feel like we're possibly trying to reach beyond our Band-Aid as a school committee, like I understand your concerns about assessments and Band-Aids, state of the state is in fact trying to keep MCAS, like I said, that's fine as long as we're not tying it to graduation. But right now, I think we have to decide, you know, is this a policy we're going to be able to satisfactorily agree on by the end of the month, or do we need to really work through this? And another way to think about this is, can we agree on something by the end of the month with the idea that maybe in the spring, we revisit this policy because it's half baked right now, and even the state, I think, would admit that it's half baked right now, and maybe in the spring, we revisit it and try to make it better?
Right.
So can we try to get it right now to a place where it's satisfactory, but still needs improvement?
I mean, would it be okay if we put in parentheses what you said as it relates to the competency determination and not to pass the class? Would that be sufficient to put that asterisk at the end of every class? To say that the end of, passing the end of course assessment does not mean...
I think it's a good idea to look into. So we'll look into that, and we can test that question against some of our job lengths to see where that's meant up here.
If I may, I should just add, I have the submission template up, there's not a lot of latitude for districts to deviate from what the policy articulates. We work from the model policy. You know, we did our best to define the language around the assessments to provide some latitude, so we're not looking at necessarily a multiple choice assessment, but it's pretty prescriptive that we have to submit.
And as much as I trust you guys, I know that this, my interpretation of this is not the same as yours. I think this means you have to pass the end of course assessment, so maybe you could just get that clarification? If they say that that is not the case, that's not what this is meant to imply, then I guess I'm fine with it, but if this is saying that a kid has to pass a final to pass a class, I'm out.
So I'm aboard with what you're saying.
Yeah.
But do you know what the language would be to resonate with?
I think that I don't get to decide, apparently, because a state is...
As Superintendent Downing had said, it's two components, it's with successful completion of the course and demonstration of mastery of the content, of the content and the skills. I see it as separate, so whatever language that I think would be appropriate to, we're gonna submit, they're gonna give us feedback.
Right.
Maybe this is them fishing for a language, like, you know, maybe districts could provide different versions, and they can read them all and say, well, this is the best one, everyone should use this, you know, so this might be an opportunity to influence what the right language is.
Did you have a question?
I mean, the other part that needs clarification is item one, that says, I'm on the first page under competency determination requirements, because I'm pretty literal, and when I read this, it says, "In doing so, the student must earn full credit for specified courses and meet one of the following criteria," and the first criteria is the final assessment for a course.
For competency determination, not passing the course.
I think that if we're going to ask for clarification, that's the other piece that we need clarification, because when I read it, it...
It was one and, and...
To me, this is where the title of the policy comes into play.
It is not clear that this is just related to competency, because it says the final assessment for a course. That's all, yeah.
I think there's a lot of terms that need to be better definitions.
Okay. All right, so that clarification, perhaps if we were to be allowed to qualify that language a little bit, I would be willing to approve any version of this policy that doesn't protect kids from that final exam requirement, but of course, the will of the rules, so maybe just...
Yeah, I know that's not the case, particularly having heard Secretary Tullwiler speak about it, so...
I'm also happy to reach out to the department.
Yeah, and there may be somebody that has the phrase or the specificity to that concern.
And would this take effect in May or June?
Class of 27?
Yeah, it does, so we would have to visit that and look at how we, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to be agile, yes. We're gonna have to be agile. We are not going to hold back any student's graduation when, we are in a period of flux right now in our state and how this is determined, so...
Do we have to adopt something by a certain...
Yes, you do, by December 31st.
And must we seek an extension?
Can I ask one more question? So this assessment that we're talking about isn't written yet, is that true? Like, right now, it's the final, the class final, that's the assessment, but the assessment that is ultimately going to be the assessment is not written yet.
Oh yeah, they're just in the, they're in a theoretical phase of...
And because that working paper, the thing that you included, they're not even gonna give final recommendations until June.
Right.
Yeah.
So it is putting a lot of ownership on districts and school committees to adopt policies that we know are going to change.
Is it possible to put a clarification in there that speaks to that being like, this is the interim or the, I don't know what the right word is, but the, you know, until we get to, the state figures out what they're gonna do and what, and writes the assessments? And we had a clarifying piece too, which I don't remember what the words were, but it was an important distinction that made the whole thing make more sense.
Is that correct, Seth?
Yeah.
So apprentices thing you guys were talking about, or...
I think it was about the distinction between fulfilling the requirements of the class, so passing the class, and the assessment, which was a competency assessment, but not necessarily related to the class. I don't understand how that is just yet, but when you said it, it made more sense.
So currently, MCAS has no bearing on a student's course, there's no connection to it. And so that's the intention here. Certainly, you can utilize it for those purposes, but it's essentially, to your point when you were saying, you know, is this a continuum of MCAS or some iteration form of that? It stands alone in that way, which is why I added the phrase here, for competency determination, because if the clarity is to read back the name of the policy and just restate it back in here, then it's clear that it's for competency determination.
Oh my.
So just, I'm sorry to keep going back to this, that if this policy is adopted, basically, a kid gets their grades in their classes, those are separate from the competency determinations, but in order to graduate, they have also have to pass and assess, they have to demonstrate competency through an assessment in each class too. And they're not related to the grade, but in order to graduate, there's going to be an assessment in each course. Like each of these courses that's listed.
The assessment can happen within the course, which it should, good assessment should be within that, and if the student failed it, but passed the course, you know, got the D, passed the course, the methodology around, okay, so we're halfway there, we got that element covered, now how do we help that student meet that competency determination? And so we're fleshing out ideas like that in terms of, okay, come back and revisit, maybe we can do some tutoring hours to get the student to that place to, you know, so that's where we work with the family and the student to do that. Because I don't, we're not gonna develop a scenario like, well, then retake the course, nope, not doing that. We're gonna, you know, because I think we'll try to be responsive to that in a multi-tiered system of support type of way.
And to be clear with our subcommittee, this was a question that came up, because there was that concern of like, if you have an assessment based on whatever it looks like, if that child is just like not able as far as like to access that in terms of like, they don't do testing well, they don't do this well, what happens? Right? So we was talking, Ms. Prince saying that, yes, looking at like, it's up to you to look at aligning how to be, do assessments within these courses, and what those assessments look like. And then to be back what Superintendent Downing was saying, if that assessment, you know, whatever it is, that student doesn't meet the needs of that assessment, of looking at, well, then it could be going back to like a portfolio, correct? Like taking a portfolio from that course, well, here's the pieces from the course that demonstrate that, yes, I actually understand and know what I'm doing, here's the portfolio, we present that to you, and that would be like in lieu of the final assessment.
Presented to who? Who's the kid presenting?
I would imagine the person...
Instructor.
Instructor, of the course, yeah.
Which is why the, there is the or on the one, two, three elements under the mastery section of final assessment course or capstone or portfolio project, because there's nothing in the policy that says that everybody has to pass the assessment that is designed that specific way to the point that Matt was making.
So about to go in a different direction. The last sentence talks about reassessing people who graduated between 2003 and 2024. Do we have records to do that if some person from, graduated from 2004, came to us and said, I want you to reassess people, do we have the documentation?
You keep student records for seven years, you're required to keep transcripts for 16. So if there was evidence beyond that, beyond the seven years, you know, they would have to demonstrate that. So students are given notice before their graduation that, get your student record before you run, kind of elements to make sure they do that, but...
And one other concept, one other thought, is maybe tie this a little bit into the graduation requirements, but I looked at the graduation requirements, and it talks about different levels of distinction for graduates, and I wonder if this, as far as measuring competency, does the assessment have to be tied into the course grade, or could they be two different things as far as assessing competency? And could the assessment be a tool you use to identify distinctions from a graduation point of view?
Yes, it can be. There's nothing in the policy that requires it to be embedded in the course.
Some other things to consider.
I think that's an element where the policy does meet the need, because it doesn't pin you into something that is very tight and unable to get to adapt to.
Okay, so I think policy has a lot of information to manage before the 17th. I have a logistical question for you, Kirk. If this vote fails on the 17th, will you have enough time to request an extension?
Yeah, I think I can just go into the portal and put that in there.
We don't have to get it in order to be within compliance, or does that really matter? A no vote at this point puts you all in a terrible position, because I would still vote no if I felt I needed to, and I didn't want to put you in that position.
Madam Chair, re-execute the will of the committee. So if we were in that situation, we would tell the state, our committee says no. And, you know, they're not gonna come say, too bad superintendent, but we will get, you know, we'll have some sort of demand for action.
Okay.
And so Leah, if you're thinking about going in that direction, I would encourage you to write the language that you would approve, and so we could submit that to the state saying, we rejected your model language, here's how we think it should look, and let them chew on that.
Well, I would actually say that he wrote it on here, he wrote it, and that looks good to me, and so maybe the next version, you could bring multiple versions if you feel strongly about it.
I can't, I can't imagine there would be any pushback on simply taking the title of the policy and adding at the end, for competency determination.
So it's not to be confused with something that is gonna be tucked into the grade.
Yeah, do you feel like this? Right.
Okay, Jackie?
So I would also just want to hear from Assistance Superintendent Ryan, on what information you got from Jesse, and then that would be...
When do you guys meet next, Jackie?
In January.
So that's a problem.
I do think though, too, I know that this is probably gonna be the last major policy for now that we'll be looking at, but I do think that for these really big ones, it is, our current model puts a lot of pressure on the, on policy and on the cabinet to quickly turn around documentation to be able to have it for the second read. Luckily for the last one, Superintendent Downing was wordsmithing in the background, but I really, I really would want to see like feedback in an email where we're not corresponding with each other, but you're just saying, hey, policy, this is what I would like us to be able to talk about, because what ends up happening is then it's putting us in a crunch. So we'll have to make a decision, we'll meet before that, based, I think, on the timing of the feedback that we get, and then be able to have something...
Do you have any more deadline policies?
These were the two major deadline policies, so the graduation requirement, the one that we've already voted on for middle school and the competency determination.
Because I think, I think that was the big problem, right, is you have deadlines on these, because I would say, to the extent that you have procedural issues with meet, and then at the next meeting we have to approve, if we just put more space between the first reading and the approval, then that should give you guys more space to actually make adjustments without having to have this time crunch.
Well, as somebody who serves on a subcommittee, you understand that there's a lot of things that happen on the backend from an operational and district level in order to inform our work. So we can go as fast as we can on this, knowing that there is like, you know, there's a tremendous amount of work and coordination between the cabinet and...
But I'm just trying to say that, you know, first reading could be at this meeting, and then the second reading could be at the January meeting rather than the December 17th meeting, except when you have time constraints, so...
I'll remind the committee, we got this information at the end of, we got it on. I mean, so while we can wish for those things, this is the position we've been placed in.
Yeah, so Jackie, I'm sorry that your subcommittee is gonna have to have a little Christmas meeting, a holiday meeting, I'm sorry. Do you think you can do it before the 17th?
Well, I think I want to hear back as to whether or not we have the information that is being requested from Jesse, and then that would really dictate, like, I don't want, I don't want to meet for the sake of meeting and then bring something that doesn't, I think, meet what you all are asking for.
I think we understand the three directions.
Yeah.
The three, three elements. I have this element, the Assistant Superintendent has the other two, so then I think we can get that, and then we'll give that guidance to Dr. Reiner, and she can simply say, here's the guidance that we got back to the state, not for deliberation, so we'll send that out in a blind CC, that if you have any feedback, you can provide it to the chair, like our normal process, and in this case, the chair of that committee. Go through that.
All right, so, yes, Chair.
So other districts, though, have asked for extensions, so if it's feeling like this is too rushed, we would not be the only district that is not able to complete it, and if we complete it in the middle of January instead of December, or the end of January, what's, what's the problem?
I think we can get these three things answered pretty darn quickly and get them right back to you. I don't think that's gonna be a concern.
Confirm me that it would just be that we're going to vote on this policy, and then we're gonna be voting on something in the future, when, after these recommendations come out and the state makes more decisions.
And just to remind the committee, we're bridging a period of time. Probably about a year.
I just know that working with kids who don't graduate easily, I am very firm on this, I'm not looking to create, I know you're not either, looking to create barriers for kids who already have a lot of obstacles in front of them. So graduation is a very serious topic, and I don't want any of us to take it lightly, even though we're tired and asleep, so, thank you, guys. Let's move the agenda now to the next item. So next, we have Dear J, new member appointment. So I wonder, Matt, if you think we can speak to this situation that we have that is very nice?
Yes, so we have a member of Dear J who's just been kind of attending, kind of there, but has now decided that she wants to step forward into a more engaging role as a member of the... of the Dear J Advisory Committee. And so Ryer Biddle has written a letter to us asking, give us a little background of who she is, where she comes from, and requesting to be voted in by the school committee as a voting member of the Dear J Advisory.
Great, thank you so much for that, Matt. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I move to appoint Ryer Biddle, Stowe resident, to the Dear J Advisory.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for the school committee, Ryer was one of the people who helped us work on the equitable decision-making tool that we are using in our policy subcommittees. Definitely demonstrated commitment, I think, to our work.
She's fantastic. This would bring Dear J, by the way, up to the point where we have now one vacancy, Ryer is to be approved. So I just want to make that clear. Any other discussion? All those in favor of appointing, appointing Ms. Biddle to Dear J? That is unanimous, thank you, everybody. So maybe we can just give a little bit more information during the subcommittee shareout, Matt, about that vacancy. So let's move now to unfinished business and the district calendar vote. I think maybe we can start with the motion.
So I actually gave you two motions.
Yeah, you did?
I was going to say, I think that there's two calendars.
One's for Wednesday, Friday, and one's for just Friday.
Yeah, so how do you want to handle this? Because there are two calendars.
All right, time out. So when you guys look at the two options, do you guys have any clarifying questions on either one? All right, so we'll take the first motion first and if it fails, we'll move on to the second motion. Are you okay with that process?
I remember this process really well.
Yes. Good. What option, Kirk? Okay, so let's find and do the first one.
All right, I move to approve the school year 26, 27 calendar hybrid model with early release days on Fridays and Wednesdays.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on that calendar?
Yeah, so I just wanted to say I was one of the five for Fridays only, but I did a lot of research and I think that this is a great opportunity for us to try something new.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments?
I was just going to reiterate my position, which is I absolutely also think that the hybrid model is the way to go, you know, as far as gives us an opportunity to gather data on what looks like when we have Wednesdays instead of just Fridays. And if we are an institution that actually absolutely prioritizes education, then this will be the right way to go as far as getting that data to make more informed decisions going forward.
Thanks, Scott. Any other comments or discussion?
I would just say, having worked in multiple states, multiple districts, the region I worked in is pretty much, we would do a middle of the week, Wednesday or Tuesday, based around attendance of students on those Fridays. So I think the hybrid model, you know, to gather some data, also have those Wednesdays and see in terms of like, does it affect attendance? Because I think having, again, that middle of the week can have students more apt to come into schools, especially our high school students who are driving, you know, taking that Friday off is much easier than taking a Wednesday off in terms of a student. So I think the hybrid model is absolutely the way to go.
I'll say that I've spoken to a couple of constituents, I think two people emailed with some questions on this, worried about the inconsistency. So I just do want to put on the table that that is a concern for some, but I think that what this does is accomplish all of what you guys just identified, but also provides a little bit of relief for parents who depend on Friday half-days. Because, can you help me, Olivia, are there four Fridays and three Wednesdays?
Four Wednesdays, three Fridays.
Four Wednesdays, three Fridays. So at least there are three Fridays that can perhaps fit that previous mold and we can then collect data to see if, oh, shift to Wednesday, all Wednesdays the year after?
The four Wednesdays that were selected were the four highest incident rates on the Habs and TV boards. So that's why we use those, those weeks.
You mean when the, when the half-days, one Friday is those months?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we looked at those months and looked at that parallel date and said, okay, that would be the one that shifted Wednesday.
Any other discussion? Okay, everybody, all those in favor of the hybrid model, raise your hand. All those opposed? And that is in favor of the motion. So that is what we will see happen next year. All right.
Just a quick comment on that.
Yeah.
To just bring it back full circle from not just the half-days, want to thank the committee for this consideration because we'll be informing the consigliere team tomorrow that the calendar's been approved so that they can firmly look into their construction schedule to be looking at the demolition of the current building.
And this also helps our town clerk.
Yes, it does. It also helps our town clerk.
Thank you so much for that. So over now to the next item, which is the graduation requirement, second reading, policy IKF. Do you want to put a motion forward?
Yes. I move to adopt policy IKF graduation requirements as presented.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on this one?
Give me a version, go ahead, sorry. I apologize. I am wondering, I think, I added this up a few times and I think I added it correctly that on the, in the right-hand column here, the number of credits that's listed in each section adds up to 82. And it's, but we have 90 credits minimum. And I wonder if we need to put that, I know we had a lot of discussion about that last line, which was five years, which was breaking my brain. But I wonder if we need to put something in there because my concern is if you're looking at this, you're going to assume that the credits that are listed there are going to add up to 90. And so if you're just following that and expecting that to be 90, it's not.
Correct.
So if we add in that additional row that says courses equivalent to eight more credits, then we add up to 90?
I think what we resolve is that's intentional because the minimum re- credits address the master requirements that we're aligning to. And the gap between those credits and the 90 minimum gives space for student choice. And so because you have to get the 90 minimum, it's assumed anywhere in the course of studies you can take courses. So it doesn't have to add up to 90.
I think Sharon is in agreement that that's fantastic, but it might just be confusing. She doesn't need an asterisk of some kind?
I.
I feel like when students go to meet with their guidance counselors to make decisions around their course of study for the following year, I don't know that a lot of people would go specifically to the policy in order to make those decisions. That it would be really the, the program of study that they would refer back to. But I, I understand what you're saying.
I think, my, I guess my thought was anywhere there's a gap where there's different information can create confusion. However, I think you're right, nobody's going to look at the policy for that.
So that leads up in our course of studies is built to, to ensure that it meets the minimum requirements of the policy, but it provides all the language and the guidance on the things that you're looking for that, to make sure families and students are going for.
What's the downside to putting another row in there that says student choice, eight credits, and then making it total up to 90?
I just, I think I'd remind the committee that, that policy documents are not community informational documents, they're governmental documents. So they're just defining what the minimum requirements are. The documents that are the community education documents are the course of study documents are the, are the handbook documents, those are the types of things because that's where the rubber hits the rubber. So I think splicing it down to those points aren't necessary in a policy, but of course, you know, we'll follow through on however the committee decides.
I think if you, on that second page, the second bullet, you could easily add, you know, a line about this would require eight additional credits beyond the subject area requirements if, if we wanted to add the language. But actually, my, my other comment is this doc, policy is referencing a policy that doesn't exist yet. The policy IKF, the competency determination one. So I'm not sure we want to approve a policy referencing something that doesn't exist.
Are you suggesting there's a risk we won't ever have that policy?
I guess, it's a good point. I brought it up last time. I mean, we could move this vote to the 17th.
Absolutely.
If the committee doesn't mind.
I actually think that's necessary per Shondor's comment. I mean, either, either that reference needs to come out or the policy needs to exist.
What do you mean?
He pointed out the policy doesn't exist, but it's referencing it, so.
But next meeting we might approve that policy.
We're approving it, it's going to be submitted so that.
We'll be quite, we'll be fine with the timelines. It came to the committee in this order because we've been waiting on the guidance for competency determination. So we said, let's make hay, do the work that we need to do on, on graduation requirements while we get the competency determination. Now we have that. So as long as we do this work in the next meeting, I think it's fine.
Is that okay?
I can, I can meet the deadlines with the state if we did that.
All right, so we're going to put this on the planning calendar for next week to actually take the vote. So we're going to, because we have a motion on the slide.
Yeah.
So I am going, so that would ultimately just require us to vote no if we want to move it to the next meeting.
Whoever made the motion can also retract the motion and if the person who seconded it all agrees to that, then the motion can be refunded.
Do you want to just retract your motion?
Yeah, I can, I will withdraw my motion.
And I approve as I seconded it. So we'll move this to the next meeting, but would you, do you guys want to let, I think, as Shondor pointed out, that second bullet on page two, I actually think the policy is okay because that second bullet exists and I, I think it's finally ready to be personally.
If it, if it would please school committee and then ensure that we feel comfortable voting on the 17th, we, we could reference the fact that, you know, of the 82, of the 82 listed, something like that. There's 82 required, something to that effect, like there's 82 required.
But, but we can't, we can't necessarily say that. And I'll just remind people, some of our science courses are six, some are four. And so there's not going to be an equation you can put down that is going to balance that. So that's why I think the second sentence addresses.
Is everybody okay with that? All right, so policy can just pump the brakes on this one, you don't need to do anything to change anything, otherwise it looks pretty disastrous, but we're going to hold the vote until the 17th. Okay, so we're going to keep moving along here to our OPEB recommendation review. And I'd like to turn it over to Scott to discuss.
So before I proceed, I have an observation. Part of the reason to have this on here was to educate, reinforce the idea on here. And while Jillian is on the committee and has seen this, two of the newer members are absent and it might be more beneficial to, there's two ways you can go. We can review this, review it again with that either here or we can defer this as well and have more people who would benefit from the discussion present. So just, I guess, just looking for a little feedback there before I move ahead.
Right, how busy is the 17th?
Getting busier.
Theory of voting shouldn't.
What did you say, Jackie?
In theory, it should be.
It's not a voting item, it's an educational item.
No, I mean the things that we are going to be voting on, we've talked about before. So in theory, it should be.
So for next meeting, as we're going to a later agenda item, we, this is where we bring back the capital plan information. So that'll be the focus of our presentation work next week. Rate review. So we start our next, next meeting is the meeting of a string of finance focus that we're going to have. I can shift to Washington DC, that keeps getting kicked along, it's, we're not under a time requirement.
I always watch the YouTube replay, right?
I, I think.
It's up to you, Scott. If you would feel more comfortable moving it to the next meeting, you can do that.
I just think it'd be more valuable when it's dealing with newer people, the newer people are present, if that's possible, which admittedly, I'll guarantee that, but.
Okay, let's move that item to the next agenda then. As well, Alida, let's go. All right, guys, we're doing it. We're moving on now to subcommittee report outs. And I wonder if there's any additional subcommittee report outs that you'd like to put on the table. I'm going to actually throw it to Matt first for Dear J Advisory.
Perfect.
What can you tell us?
So Dear J, a small blurb for me to present to just the communities looking for additional members. I'm just going to read what they wrote down. The Neshova Regional School Committee is seeking members for the Art of Diversity, Equity, Awareness, and Racial Justice Advisory, Dear J. With members who are parents, students, teachers, district leaders, alumni, and community members, the Dear J Advisory provides NRSC with support and recommendations to ensure students of all races, ethnicities, sexual orientations, gender identities, religious affiliations, neurotypes, physical abilities, nationalities, incomes, languages, and bodies belong and are able to realize their unique potential as active contributors to their community. The Dear J Advisory has seven appointed members and is open to all. We welcome and encourage you to join us in our work and our hope is to have representation from all towns in our district. Interested community members can take on different roles. For example, one can become a member of our, of the advisory board, serve on a subcommittee, or simply attend advisory board meetings to contribute to the work. The work is guided by the Neshova Regional School Committee. The commitment for an advisory board member amounts to about three to four hours a month. This includes attending a monthly meeting, one and a half hours additionally serving on a subcommittee. For more information about our work, you can visit our webpage for review our guiding document. If you are interested in participating on the advisory committee, please contact me at Elbit Riddle, School Committee Chair, at elbitriddle@nrst.net to express your interest. If you'd like more information about our work or have questions, please reach out to the advisory at dearj at nrst.net. That's it.
Thank you so much, Matt. We will say that having a community member from Lancaster is ideal.
Yes.
As we don't have representation from Lancaster at this time, but that is not essential. It's hopeful. Excellent. All right, any other subcommittee shareouts?
I'll see, we'll be meeting, I'm kidding. I do, um. We will probably be meeting, but we are meeting in January to discuss. There are, I believe, two updates from the August 2025 MASC update. And of those, there's a few that are new. So part of that is giving us some space as a, as school committee members as we go through the budget season and then hopefully bringing some of the easier ones to the committee for review at a later time.
Great, thanks, Policy. Do you want to do building committee update?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything new since the last update, but you all have received your invitation, I hope, to attend the, the building walk. I'll just want to reiterate at this point, please be at the, if you're attending and you return the NRSC P, be at the consigliere trailer at 5:45 so we have time to distribute the PPE because we must be walking in the building at 6 o'clock and order to door 45 minutes so that we can begin the SBC meeting at 7.
And how do you access or get to the consigliere trailer?
Good question. So if you're coming down 117, it is the turn right at the tennis courts, parallel to the student entrance. So you'll want to take the more westbound entrance and then as you come into the property, you will veer left, there's one road that will take you straight to the trailer.
Kirk, at that meeting, would we be making any votes on solar related projects at the 17th? No.
December 18th, I believe.
Hawk, did you get the invitation from Ms. Hanigan?
I did, I just.
Okay. We've been cross-checking where it went, so.
Everybody fills out that, it was a form that you had to fill out. So Bridgette, Anne again, it came from her, thank you, Bridgette. Any other subcommittee shareouts? All right, guys, so. All right, guys, so items for next agenda, you guys can see, we've talked about it already a little bit. Anything that you want added to either the agenda or the parking lot?
Do you have the communication sent to the presentation at that, at some point?
Because you were, the plan was for your subcommittee to meet with Kirk to review the data or the presentation.
Yes.
And when is that going to happen?
I have a schedule for the 16th, but I need to reschedule, and I'm working with my subcommittee members on an alternative date, because I found one to...
Got it. And so we are looking to perhaps push that to, I mean, budget season's pretty rough, so are we thinking March?
Maybe I'd not like it to go that far.
Yeah.
The other alternative is I could touch base with Kirk, you know, and review the presentation separately. I just want to get your feedback and...
Yeah, love that.
Present it to the committees.
So it's in the parking lot?
Okay.
So you just let me know when you want it to land?
Okay.
And then click and I can legend it.
There is one item in the parking lot, if I may. We have education foundation proposal. There, there isn't a proposal, and the path that it's going there, I shouldn't discuss that item because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
It's going nowhere. So, not for any, poor reasons, it's actually because of bylaws and other organizations. So, I am, I don't know if it's necessary to have it in the parking lot unless the committee itself just wants to, to talk about the topic.
So I'm going to leave it in the parking lot, because I knew that it's in the strategic plan. It's also something that I'm interested in. Perhaps you and I could talk it through a little bit at our planning meeting, and then we can...
I like it, okay.
See where we go from there.
When is the next update on collective bargaining or negotiations happening?
So, there is, to my knowledge, no update about collective bargaining. Have we moved any closer to establishing tie-stakes?
There's no update today. We have a meeting tomorrow.
So maybe we can, we can put that in the parking lot to do collective...
Collect attention.
Just so that you all are all aware, one of the requirements of a school committee is to review executive session minutes and make determination on whether or not those minutes can be released, but you need to approve them. We have a little bit of a backlog, so that is something that is going to happen at an executive session coming too soon. We're just needing to find some time to do that, because it could be a little laborious, especially for our secretary. So, more to come on that, but I'm going to put that in the parking lot as well.
It is, the people that are still on the committee, have you participated in it?
That, no. So, and that's how it goes. That's actually how it goes. Because you're supposed to buy policy approval every six months, and so there's going to inevitably be turnover. And so it's, it's okay.
I think we've met like two or three times in my four years on the committee, so...
Yeah.
How much of a backlog could there be that I'd be familiar with?
Executive session?
Yeah.
Oh, no, we've had a few more than that.
Okay.
So anyway, there's nothing nefarious there. We're just trying to find the proper time to, to approve and then decide whether or not they'll be released. That's in the parking lot. So you guys, if an executive session comes, comes up around that, you'll just understand what that's all about. Yeah, so it's tomorrow. I think Nancy, but, anything else? All right, guys, I am seeing nothing other than adjournment. Can I get a motion?
Uh, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Reiner.
Second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Powell. So, all those in favor of adjourned. That is unanimous. Very good, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next time.
Yeah.
Policy, you're our hero. Always have been, always will be.
Yeah.